So we don't need to do play channel stuff?
Okay.
All right, yeah, let's go with Manuel's first, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Everybody ready? Here we go.
Can we have cell phones off? We have cell phones off. It's up to you, you're the chair, president.
Turn it down. How you doing?
I'm too bad away.
Oh, living the dream one night married at time. All right. Okay, good evening. Go ahead, have a seat. Okay. Thank you for being here tonight. We truly appreciate your interest in serving the Keystone Central School District Board of Directors. As you know, we are conducting interviews to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Polly Donahue, who represented Region Three. We're very grateful for your willingness to step forward and consider serving in this important role. The board plays a vital part in the district's vision, supporting our students and staff, and ensuring that we continue to make decisions that reflect the best interests of our staff, and ensuring that we continue to make decisions that reflect the best interests in our community. Tonight's interview gives us an opportunity to learn more about you, your background, your perspectives, and your reasons for wanting to be part of the board's work. We'll be asking a series of questions designed to help you understand your approach to teamwork, decision-making, community engagement. There's no need for long or formal answers, just be yourself and share your honest thoughts. Again, thanks for taking time to meet with us this evening, and for your interest in helping Keystone Central continue to move forward. Okay, so. You want to do an opening and just kind of tell us a little bit about yourself before we get into these?
Yeah, definitely. So my name is Mano Rodriguez. I am not originally from the area. I'm from New York. Mostly, I was born in the Bronx, but mostly lived my life in Long Island. So it was definitely a hustle and bustle kind of place, you know? So coming here was definitely a culture shock. A lot of different things that I, you know, had to get used to and I kind of blend with. But I'm here, I'm a father of two wonderful children. They both come to Keystone Central School District. And, and my wonderful wife Sabrina, that's been doing so much to help me out with everything. I volunteer for the Blanchard Station Nine. So I do do some volunteer with them, and I work, I currently work at the Quahana Boot Camp, and unfortunately now it's closing. So, yeah, it's a, it's a great job, a great gig, and now we're just gonna have to do the same thing somewhere else. That's all. And I'm currently involved with my church. We do a lot of help volunteer work with them. I also am involved with the Pregnancy Resource Clinic in Lock Haven. I am on the Watchman Committee with them. I just recently started that. I'm also on the Watchman Group, which is kind of a little bit of a security detail, I guess, for their events and things like that. But I'm also a parent advocate, volunteer parent advocate with them. So we just help other parents take their steps in, you know, raising their child and teaching them about the first steps in childhood and stuff. As we all know, it doesn't come with a manual, so it's nice to have some advice from other people also.
That's a fact. Okay. Thank you. Now, what I'd actually like to do is, with the board's approval, I'd like for each of us to read one of the questions. Okay? And then we can write down what their answers is, okay? So. Let's start, Tom, do you want to start with number one?
Well, can you tell us about yourself, which you already did in the background? Including what led up to you applying for this vacancy and describe the experiences and skills that you believe are due to serve effectively as Keystone Central School District Board?
Well, I guess we covered the background part. So what led me to apply was honestly, the biggest thing that kind of pushed me to apply was when my children started attending public school. And then I started getting a little more interested in, you know, what's going on, what decisions are being made? You know, things along that route, you know, where, you know, as, as, as not only a taxpayer, but as a parent to these kids, I want to know, you know, what, what's happening kind of behind the scenes? And not just for me, for even my friends and family members and the, the community, you know, kind of help out and see if there's any change to be made, what best position to do it and to step up and help make that change? Not just sit back and complain and gripe. Skills, well, I would say some of the skills I, I was on, I, I feel like I have, you know, good communication skills. I was on the hostage negotiation team with the prison for a while. So we did that for a little bit. Thank goodness, we were never deployed, I guess, that's a good thing. So, so it was mostly all training, you know, things that we went through.
Colton can mute that.
You know, and just some of the other skills that I have, it's just working together with people. In every team that you have, there's always someone with different either opinions or different views on how to accomplish a goal. And I can, I can work with that. I've learned to work with that. I've learned to, even if it doesn't go my way, I've learned to understand it and, and just continue on.
All right. What do you see is the greatest strength of Keystone Central School District? And what challenges do you think we face?
The biggest strength I see is that there's a mix of everyone, and everyone's belief on either aisle of, you know, any thought process. And, you know, the good thing is, is that you can always use that as your advantage, because you can never really be one way or the other too much, because then you could break, and that's not what you want. You want a good mix. And a lot of the challenges I see is just the, you know, the pressure being felt. You know, the pressures that might build up with some of these decisions that you have to make, and, and even just facing your peers out in public, you know, the ones that maybe you didn't make happy. And unfortunately, this is a spot where you're not going to make everybody happy.
All right. Describe a time when you had to make a difficult decision as part of a group. How did you handle the differing opinions?
Well, there was, when I lived in Long Island, I was also part of the Fire Department, Dairy Company, too. And we were put out on a call, and we were shorthanded in men. And one of the gentlemen there that I don't always see eye to eye with took the front seat, and I was okay with that. And when we got to the scene, he made a call that I didn't feel was correct. I didn't feel was right. And later on, the captain that was there also kind of, he kind of agreed with what I said, but at the same time, the guy that was there was the lead person, and I had to follow what he wanted me to do, because he was calling the shots. And luckily, things were done and they were accomplished. So I didn't have to, you know, no one got hurt. It's, everyone got home, that's what the goal was. Everyone got home with all their ten toes and ten fingers, so.
Okay. What do you believe is the role of a school board membership? How does that role differ from the superintendent and the administration?
Well, I feel like the role of a school board member is to help make decisions that are going to curve these children's future. I think that a lot of the decisions that are made here not only impact, you know, everybody wants to talk about taxpayers, it doesn't impact just the taxpayers. It impacts the children and their future and the things that, you know, they have to go through, you know, in these 12 grades. The, and the way it differs, I believe, from the superintendent or administration, and, and I could be wrong with this, a lot of this stuff is kind of new to me. So forgive me if I'm not correct in this, but the superintendent or administration, I believe is that the, you know, the superintendent administration kind of oversees a lot of the decision-making process and I believe has the ultimate say in what happens.
Elizabeth?
Oh, yeah. Excuse me. Collaborative decision-making is more effective when members actively listen to all sides of an issue and publicly deliberate before a decision is made. To reach an agreement, viewpoints may not be in alignment with your beliefs. Provide an example of a situation in which you did not agree with an opposing group's viewpoint. How did you respond? After the decision was made and you still didn't agree with the outcome, what follow-up actions did you take? What did you learn? Please do not give specific names. Please focus on the example and the outcome of the difficult situation.
Well, there was an issue that raised up with, with the union at work. You know, there was, I guess, not to get into specific details, there was some judgment calls that were trying to be made. You know, obviously you have one side or the other. There was definitely a lot of opposing views. I didn't agree with certain, certain, certain union members that were there. Yes, things got a little, a little heated, but nothing got out of control, I guess I would say. Everybody was able to calm down and, and, and finally come to an agreement with a decision. The decision wasn't in favor of the people I was with. But in reality, the only thing I could have done there was just continue coming to meetings and voicing my opinion as to, you know, what we wanted and what we wanted done. So it, you know, it was, it's, it's always a learning lesson. It's always a lesson to be learned when, when it comes down to, you know, making a decision and having so many different opinions and views on certain things, and how, and how some of these people can really, I guess, be strong in their, in their, in their viewpoint, you know? And there's, and, and it's not always, there's not always, you don't always have to die on certain hills, basically. You don't always have to die on a hill. There's always a battle to be won, maybe not the war.
School board directors' plans, actions, and decisions are influenced by many factors, including input from community members and constituents. How will you engage with your community to obtain their viewpoints? And what is your plan for ensuring their voices are heard? Please provide an example. Additionally, how would you handle an individual complaint brought to you by a citizen in your region?
Well, like I said, I, I'm involved with the Fire Department. I'm involved with a lot of things in church. We do, like, for example, we do a lot of food bank things, and I help with that whenever I can, whenever I have the time, I have to work. And I can engage, I engage with a lot of people in the community that way, you know? I can, and I run into a lot of people, you know, actually, funny enough, my wife really knows a lot of people. So every time we go somewhere, we're being stopped by someone in our community, mostly honestly in Region Three, which would be the Blanchard and the Beach Creek area, I would say. But, so I, I do engage with a lot of people there. And honestly, it's, I don't mind sitting down and having coffee with someone. If I see someone, they have a question and, and, and talking to them. I don't mind, you know, going out for a walk and spending a couple times, you know, a couple minutes talking to my neighbor if they have a question or whatever it is that they want to talk about. And, and they can voice their opinions to me at really any point there, because I'm working for them, you know? If, if I was to be on board, I'm, I'm here for them. And, oh, and, you know, one, one example of, of some of the, some of the support I have in the community is, I know it wasn't required, but I do have a few pages of signatures that I got from my neighbors and, and the community and part of Region, and all Region Three that's there. So if, if you like, later on, you can look through those. It's not much, but I didn't have much time to really go around myself and do it. And good golly, that took a long time by myself. My wife helped, and I had a couple other people help, but yeah, it took a while. Yeah, a lot of people have questions, a lot of questions.
Chris, do you have a copy of the questions with you?
Yes, sir.
You want to read number seven?
Sure. Sorry, I can't be there tonight. I got some transportation difficulties going on, but working on getting them worked out.
All good.
And what other school districts or community organizations or activities have you been involved in? I think you kind of answered that.
Yeah, so like I said, I have not really been involved in the school districts, but in other community organizations, like I said, I, I'm involved with the PRC. I am on their, on their committee. I'm very new there, but I am on their committee. And just the organizations like the Fire Department and the church and, you know, the PRC that I get to interact with the community and the people around.
Please just, please describe how you would handle an individual complaint brought to you by a citizen in your region. In addition, explain how you believe the school board can balance its responsibilities to provide a quality education with the need to manage the financial burden on local taxpayers. I know that's two different questions there, but.
Well, you know, if a citizen has a question about anything or a complaint, there's nothing wrong with me writing it down, jotting it down, and having it there. So next time, you know, we come together as a board, bring it up, why not? Never hurts to ask. It never hurts to, you know, seek an answer. So, you know, that's probably the simplest way to do it. I don't think we can overcomplicate, you know, being asked a question by someone, you know, someone else or whatnot. And yeah, that's, that's definitely, honestly, that's, that's some of the questions that I, I got when I went to go get some signatures, where, you know, the financial burden and trying to find a, a, a happy medium between, you know, giving quality versus just quantity to these children without, you know, breaking the bank and being able to do that without spending what we don't have, you know? And, you know, there is a big burden in doing that. It's, you know, I'm sure it's extremely difficult, especially asking the taxpayers to, you know, take that burden upon their shoulders. It's, I'm sure that's really difficult and, and, and hard to, you know, to do.
Do you have any relatives who work at KCSD?
No, no relatives.
All right. Is there anything else you want to ask the board?
Well, I guess, you know, the biggest things I can say is, you know, I can, I feel like if you give me a chance to be on the board, I, I can definitely, I'm definitely going to try my hardest to do what I have to do for the people. And that's what I'm here for, it's for the people. I have worked so many years in corrections, and one of the biggest things is, you know, being fair, firm, and consistent. And I feel like that's things that can be applied to just about anything that you do. Being fair with the people, being consistent, so that way you don't always, you don't surprise the people with something new, you know? And, and being firm when you have to, you know? And, and making decisions that maybe people don't agree with. The other thing is, is that I'm also bilingual, and I've noticed that the, the, the Hispanic community has been rising a lot in the area, like I've been seeing a lot more. And I, I do feel like, if anything, maybe, just maybe, it can be something to bridge the gap between, you know, the different cultures and different people coming in. And maybe just getting more people involved in, you know, coming to school board meetings, making decisions, or being involved with their children a little bit more at the school. So, you know, I, I do believe that, you know, that's something that could help the situation. And I'm just looking to further these kids' educations with, you know, there's people out there that I, that, that I, you know, my wife and I really do appreciate. For example, Brad McCloskey is, is a man that he has gone above and beyond and, and has done so many things to boost morale in the school and, and, and help. And those kids just light up. My, my kid lights up when he sees him in that school. And it's just things like that that need to be, that need to be, how would I say, praised? You know, in this, in this, in this, in this field, you know, with these kids. These kids are the future, their education is the future. And that's what counts, that's what we're all fighting for. It doesn't matter really how you get there, it's their education is what's most important.
Okay, I do have one follow-up question for you, okay? You stated that you work with the DOC and that you're working Quahana right now. With that, with Quahana closing here soon, what are your plans as far as staying in the area?
I'm not planning on moving. They, what they do is they give us a choice between, I believe it's three jails. And you put the one that you want to go to the most and so on and so forth. And I'm just gonna have to, you know, I'm just gonna have to drive, depending on which one I go to. So hopefully it can be something close. If not, the other two jails that I have in mind are, are not that far, not that far. So I'm hoping and praying that I can get into the one that I want.
Going to try and get into Benner?
Well, I thought about that, but unfortunately, the years that I do have in, there's a lot of guys that have way more many years than I.
Really?
And it works on seniority, so I have to wait.
I'm retired from Rockview, so I, I get it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have anything? Okay, all right, good enough then. All right. So in closing, I'd like to say thank you again for taking time to meet with us this evening and for your willingness to serve the Keystone Central School District and our community. We truly appreciate your interest in joining the board and the thoughtfulness you brought to your responses tonight. As we move forward, the board will be completing all candidate interviews before making a decision on the appointment. Once the decision is reached, we'll notify all the applicants of the outcome. Regardless of the result, we're grateful that you're willing to step forward and share your desires to support our students, staff, and community. It is the commitment of the people like you that helps keep KCSD strong and moving in a positive direction. Thanks again for being here this evening and for your continued support of the district.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Murd.
Definitely, can we have copies of that, please?
Oh, yes. You, do you just want these?
Yeah, would you leave it with Christine, please?
Okay, sure.
Just so you keep it, so you have a copy, right?
Yeah, okay, yeah, we'll make copies.
Okay.
Christine, you want me, yeah, go ahead.
I thought that my printer was out of ink.
Of course.
Okay. Going back, now going down through, everybody score the individual? Okay, we'll be doing that with Kimberly then.
What was Chris gonna score?
Chris, you've been scoring, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, I did.
Okay. That's how he scores.
Oh, yes, please. I mean, he's all our people in his region, I'm assuming, right?
Yeah.
Beach Creek, Blanchard, Blanchard, Beach Creek, Beach Creek, Beach Creek, Beach Creek. Blanchard, 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 oh my God.
I am not scoring mine because I don't have a vote on this.
Okay, all right.
You're not planning on using these as a voting mechanism, are you?
Or using these to determine who's the greater, who actually is rates higher?
This is supposed to be a vote. A chi, a choice of the board.
I understand that, but I mean.
This is not a vote.
We can utilize.
To help you make your vote, that's fine, but.
That's what I'm doing.
That's what, that's what we're using it for.
Yeah, we're not going by the score. Saying, we aren't doing anything. These are for each of us individually, and we have to vote.
Okay. Your point, Bill, if I understand you correctly, is that you don't believe that the point total should be the determiner, that the cumulative point total shouldn't be the turner of who gets appointed? It should be a, a vote, a vote of the individual board members?
Yes.
So the, so we're not adding up all the points in one big pile? You're just using the points to help you keep track of?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I honestly.
Then why even have them on there?
What's that?
Then why even have them on there? Just go by them.
I didn't make up the form.
Well, that, this is basically how we've always done it.
I know you didn't make it.
Done it before.
Well, I know that, I'm just saying, if, if, I mean, if you're just going by impressions, then we don't really need it. I mean, I don't care, I mean, whether they're on there or not.
All right.
I'd like to present this, eighty-eight.
All right. You all set, Kimberly?
I'm all set, thank you. Yeah, I was locked outside, I thought I was locked out anyway.
All right, so. We're gonna start, okay. Good evening and thank you for being here tonight. We truly appreciate your interest in serving on the Keystone Central School District Board of Directors. As you know, we're conducting interviews to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Polly Donahay. Who represented Region Three. We're very grateful for your willingness to step forward and consider serving in this important role. The school board plays a vital part in guiding the district's vision, supporting our students and staff and ensuring that we. Continue to make decisions that reflect the best interests of our community. Tonight's interview gives us an opportunity to learn more about you, your background, your perspectives. And your reason for wanting to be part of the board's work. We'll be asking you a series of questions designed to help us understand your approach to teamwork. Decision-making and community engagement. There's no need for long or formal answers, just be yourself and share your honest thoughts. Okay, again, thank you for taking the time to meet with us this evening and for your interest in helping Keystone Central continue to move forward. Okay, so. Um, I asked, uh, Manuel. To give us a little brief background about himself, you know, and stuff like that, but. As Tom pointed out, this is basically part of the first question, so if you just wanna go ahead and read the first question, Tom.
Yep. Can you tell us about yourself and your background, including what led you to apply for the vacancy? And describe the experiences and skills that you believe have prepared you to serve effectively as a Keystone Board Member?
Thank you. Well, thank you for having me here today, I'm Kim Johnson, I've lived in Beach Creek for twenty years. Uh, I'm a mother of two children, two wonderful children. I grew up in a working-class family, my father worked for the electric company. My mom was a secretary and a waitress and also cleaned houses. I learned the value of hard work, I've been working since I was fourteen years old, I started out as a camp counselor. And I believe that hard work is very valuable. And I try to teach that to my children and I try to teach that to my students. Um, so making the connection, I work at Lock Haven University and I'm involved in education. If you looked at my V I D A, I've been there for.
Kimberly, I hate to interrupt you, but could you pull your microphone a little bit closer, cuz we do have an individual online? Thank you, I appreciate it.
No problem, cuz usually I speak too loudly, my kids say. So, okay, if I speak too loudly, let me know as well, okay? Um, so I work at Lock Haven University, I've served on various committees, I've been advisor to many student groups, I work closely with students. I've taken them to conferences, um, I've worked with them a lot outside of the classroom and I've done that for the full twenty-four years that I've been there. Um, and so I just felt that when this came up, cuz you asked why. It's, I feel that those skills are transferable to this position. Uh, I don't feel like, uh, I would be gaining anything from it because my children are now in college, um, my daughter just started. And I just felt that I'm in the season of life where I'm responsible to serve and. I know you are very busy and so am I, and I'm sure you don't need to be doing this, but you do it out of service. And so that's why I applied for the position, because where I'm at in life right now, I'm able to do that now that my children are older. And I feel that the skill sets are directly transferable, if you could ask me specific questions also about my V I D A. You know, cuz it's just boring stuff, we're, you know, working on grants and, um, being director of various academic. And also, uh, student, uh, involved activities. So I can go into that in more depth, but I, I, I think the biggest. Uh, thing that I would like to underscore is I feel that all of those skills are transferable to something like this. Thank you.
What do you see is the greatest strengths of Keystone Central School District and what challenges do you think we face?
That's a good question. Well, I know for a fact that your strengths include your sports program. Uh, both of my children, they were involved in track, Gracie also did, uh, wrestling. She also was involved in cross-country. And the coaches are wonderful, including the assistant coaches, so I think as far as I know. That the sports. Program is being run very well and it was something that my, my own kids will never forget, so I know that's a strength. Looking, I just was looking at various things online and it seems that, like every. School and university, there are financial issues. And we're dealing with that at Lock Haven and trying to find a way to be, uh, most effective. In spending that money, so I would say a challenge, Mrs. Smith would be that, um. There's probably some financial issues and decisions that would be difficult to make. Uh, I would need to learn more about that, of course, if, uh, I got the position. But I've been in that position many times and so I think I am a good steward of funding and that is something that I would bring to the table.
Okay, uh, can you describe a time when you had to make a difficult decision as part of a group? And how did you handle the differing opinions?
Okay. You have to listen to people. If you don't listen to people, it's going to come out somewhere else, it come out. In hostility, it could come out in maybe not doing, um, their share of the work. So I think compromise is a really good way to go, I've tried to do various programs on campus. Um, to bring different groups together. When I've had a difficult situation, I try to be transparent, I try to be civil. And I try to understand where the person is coming from. And, um, ultimately, you know, you might come up with a decision that, um. You're not happy with, but if you've done it in a democratic way, I think that's a good way to move forward and that's how I've handled it in the past.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, sorry about that. Alright. So, what do you believe is the role of the school board member? And how does that role differ from the superintendent or the administration?
It seems to me, um, that the role of the s- school board member would be to set policy. To provide vision. Um, to operate in the public interest. I think administrators and the superintendent, they're more responsible, or my understanding is they're more responsible for day-to-day operations, staffing. Dealing with. Maybe behavioral issues. But in short, I believe that the board is to provide oversight and direction. And also to be out amongst the community and understand where the, where the community members are coming from and what their needs are. So I think they are two distinct, one is focusing on vision and policy and the other is implementing that policy.
Okay. Elizabeth?
Thank, thank you. Hi.
Hi.
Collaborative decision-making is more effective when members actively listen to all sides of an issue. And publicly deliberate before a decision is made. To reach an agreement, viewpoints may not be in alignment with your beliefs. Provide an example of a situation in which you did not agree with an opposing group's viewpoint. How did you respond? After the decision was made and you still didn't agree with the outcome. What follow-up actions did you take? What did you learn? Please do not give specific names, please focus on the example and the outcome.
Well, Mrs. Lynch, Ms. Lynch, there are many times where I've been involved where I would say. Probably over fifty percent where maybe I don't agree with the opposing view. And so you have to learn to look, work with other people and again, make sure you understand where they're coming from, cuz oftentimes we assume. And that's not, I don't think the best way to operate. Um, so if someone has an opposing view, I try to start out where, what do we have in common, there's like. Even if we love students, that's what we have in common, so we have to start there and I think then we can make progress and like I said in the last question, one of the last questions. You're not gonna have people agree with you, but if it's democratically decided and that's the vision of the group, then you move forward and hopefully maybe you can. Uh, get involved in another area and make changes and if, you know, based on some of the things in my V I D A, um. We didn't have a women's center, I didn't agree with that. And so I, uh, figured out how to get a women's center on campus. And one of the ways was to get funding. So you might disagree on things, well, this group can try to do it one way, or, um, if you can't get somebody on board. You could possibly, uh, give them some sort of other position within that decision, so I'm specifically thinking of. On the DOJ grant, I got a Department of Justice grant to fight sexual assault on campus. And, um, it also dealt with domestic violence and stalking. And, you know, it's really, it's not funny, but it's ironic because, um. Once you have the funding, sometimes people are more willing to work with you. And out of the woodwork, all these people would be calling it, cuz it seems like a lot of money, but it was actually over three years, so it wasn't as much. As, as it seemed, so, you know, um, you're gonna have disagreements and you have to work through them. And, uh, you know, sometimes it's uncomfortable, but I try not to assume that the person has bad intentions. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Johnson, uh, school board directors' plans, actions and decisions. Are influenced by many factors, including input from the community members and constituents. How will you engage with your community to obtain their viewpoints and what is your plan for ensuring their voices are heard? Please provide an example. Additionally, how would you handle an individual complaint brought to you by a citizen in your region?
Okay, so, um, the first part of the question is how would I engage with the community and make sure that their voices are heard?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I think that would be one of the most important aspects of my job. Uh, I do enjoy meeting people and being around people and learning about them. And I don't know what you're already doing, but I would assume you would have some sort of, you know, open house or some sort of, um. Events where you can meet members of the community. Uh, I do think it's important that everybody's voice is heard, cuz again, it comes out somewhere, so you wanna make sure. That, um, you understand where the per- person's coming from. And I think the second part of that question was what are the pro- what, um, would you do, how would you handle a complaint?
Yes, how would you handle an individual complaint brought to you by a citizen in your region?
Okay, so I'm thinking maybe it was a, a parent who has a situation with a, with their student. I would make sure that they go through proper channels first. Um, at the university, we start at the bottom, for example, the professors are at the bottom, believe it or not, we are. Sorry, I didn't know there were people behind me, um, so, uh. You start with the professor, if there's not satisfaction for the student or parent, then you would talk to the department chair or the assistant chair. Uh, followed, if they still weren't satisfied, then you would go up to the dean and we would all meet with the dean. And if that doesn't work, um, the parent or child is still not, um, satisfied, we would, uh, meet with the provost. That way, if anybody always wants to run to the president, instead of talking to the professor, they're emailing the president when it could have been handled much more easily, so. That's how we operate the university and I think that's how I would operate if I was on the school board.
Okay. Press? He's, he's remote.
Yeah, and what other school districts? Or community organizations or activities are you involved in? Or have you been involved in?
Uh, I've done various things in the community, mostly kids' stuff, um. Uh, for my children weren't involved in a co-op, so I would be an assistant, um, teacher, I would assist the, 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 the teacher in the activities. I've, um, uh, cooked meals for events, I, um, have cleaned bathrooms. Um, for the co-op, we have to rotate, um, I'm a friend of my family, um. What else have, uh, did this past summer, we had the parade at Beach Creek, if you haven't been to that parade, it's such a wonderful parade. I was shocked how good that parade was, so, um, I hope to do it again this year, so just family-oriented events right now. I do a lot of activities with my students, um, I'm advisor to one club. Where I meet with them at least once to, once or twice a week, we do an activity. Uh, so I'm keeping very busy and usually it's, it involves something around the children, I've done other things too. Uh, my daughter was a wrestler, so I would be like, um, I guess the video top, the, the videographer. For the wrestling matches, which was so great cuz you got a, a view right base of things, I would really recommend it if you're a parent to do that. Um, so just, uh, family-oriented sorts, sorts of things and, um, right now. I feel in the season life where I could maybe take on another responsibility and that's why I would hope to add school, school board to that list.
Please describe how you would handle an individual complaint brought to you by a citizen in your region. In addition, explain how you believe the school board can balance its responsibility to provide a quality education. With the need to manage the financial burden on local taxpayers.
That's a lot to unpack.
It is.
Right, um. Okay.
The, the first part of that, you've already answered.
Right, okay.
You've already answered that, so don't worry about that part.
Okay, so, um, uh, uh. And you said to, how would I balance that with financial responsibilities?
Yep, explain how you believe the school board can balance the responsibilities. Or balance its responsibilities to provide a quality education with the need to manage the financial burden on local taxpayers.
Well, we have a responsibility, we would have a responsibility as a school board to provide a quality education. Uh, I'm in that situation now where we don't necessarily have all the funding that we want. And so we have to think of creative ways to meet the needs of the students, um, you know, uh. We think maybe innovative ways as well. And so I would think that the quality, the quality education would be the number one goal. While also balancing the finances and I feel that because I've been working with the Department of Justice, which. Is really just a bureaucratic monster, it's, it's a very difficult thing to navigate. That I have the experience of working with budgets, with paperwork, with assessments. And so it is a balancing act and I also think it involves. Creativity and being able to think differently sometimes, I think if something works, just leave it be. But, um, sometimes we have to come up with new ideas, so it would depend, it would depend on the situation, but I would think that. The, in the forefront of my mind would be providing a quality, quality education for our students.
Do you have any relatives that work at K C S D?
No, ma'am.
Alright, one last one, is there anything else you would like to say to us, share with us or ask us or whatever?
What, um, characteristics are you looking for, for someone for this position?
Alright, well. The characteristics that we're looking for is someone that's, um. Willing to come onto the board, be able to listen to what's going on with people. That work here on the boards, okay, we also are looking for someone who has, um. Their individual opinions and is willing to state them. And be able to represent the region in which. They, uh, represent. So, that, that's ba- I mean, it's a kiss principle.
Right, so, absolutely. Uh, I like that you said, um, state their opinions because, um. It sounds like to me that you don't want to hire someone that's just gonna agree. it sounds like to me that you don't want to hire someone that's just gonna agree with you. And that's who we are looking for on the school board. So I think that's a good thing to know. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, anything else?
Um, I just, I wrote a couple of notes just to wrap up because um uh, Mr. Johnston asked me if there's like any other words I'm.
Sure.
So I figured ju- just to, to wrap it up.
Yeah, feel free to do that.
Um, I'd like to add to this. The education has been the focus of my entire professional life. For more than twenty years, I've worked with students, faculty, and administrators to build programs, to solve problems, and to create a positive learning environment for all of our students. I bring experience in leadership, in policy, and collaboration. I've been on many, many committees and I understand how they work. Um, I have a real commitment to listening and to serving the committee and our community. Lastly, I care deeply about the success of our local schools. And I would be honored to contribute that experience and perspective to the board.
Okay, thank you. Now, um and closing here, thank you again for taking time to meet with us this evening and your willingness to serve Ke- Keystone Central School District and our community. We truly appreciate your interest in joining the board and the thoughtfulness you brought to your responses tonight. As we move forward, the board will be complete completing all candidate interviews before making a decision on the appointment. Once the decision is reached, we'll notify all applicants to the outcome. Regardless of the results, we're grateful that you're willing to step forward and share your desires to support our students, staff, and community. It's a commitment of people like you that helps keep Keystone Central strong and moving in a positive direction. Thank you again for being here this evening and for your continued support of the district.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
I know it's not on here, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
You brought up many times about athletics. How do you feel about trades versus athletics?
I don't think it's either or, but I'm, uh, I don't know anybody's position on this, so I hope I don't say the well, you want someone who's opinionated.
Just go ahead.
Um, I s- I am a big supporter of the trades. Um, has anybody tried to get a plumber in the last year in the middle winter after a frost? It, it's very, very difficult. Okay. Um, I don't believe that everybody is meant to go to college and, but we still want really smart people in those trades. We need mechanics. We need plumbers. We need masons. We, we need, we, we, we're a growing economy. We need these people. And I heard that, for example, um plumbers, we were hundreds of thousands of plumbers short in this country. And so I don't know if it's because, you know, my father was just, uh, you know, we're, we're, we're just working class or what, but I think that it has impacted me because I, I understand about the importance of that. And I, I, I don't even know that much about your program here as far as the trades. But I would highly recommend focusing on that as well. Um, and I think it's more fair to the students who have a special inclination and talent towards that.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you guys remember my interview, she said the same thing I said. Because I said, you're not gonna call Robbie Gold at midnight to come unplug your toilet.
I, that's fact. So, all right. Thank you, Campbell. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, when do you think you'll come to a decision?
Well, we're gonna do tonight.
We'll, we'll probably, we'll be uh discussing what's going on and stuff like that from there. You'll be notified. Probably, when are we looking at notifying them?
Aren't we scheduled to have a meeting on November the sixth?
Yes, so right, so right before our uh work session, we're gonna do a special meeting to make the appointment.
Right, so you'll know before that meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah. Well, thank you for the opportunity. Um, you're all very nice. It's basically payless. So um uh, thank you for your consideration and I'm sure you'll make um the best choice. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I appreciate it too.
When this was advertised, I just saw we're, we're gonna deliberate now and, and vote, correct?
We're not going to vote, but we're going to try and come to a decision to see who we want.
I, I would like to vote tonight, since we're all here in front.
Christine, we're the only two people that applied. All right, thank you.
Um, I, I would like to, is there anyone that?
The problem is, it was published that we were gonna vote on November the sixth, wasn't it?
Right, but we can, what we can do is we can talk about it. And based upon what we're looking at, um, get an idea of who we're all looking at.
We can deliberate, but I can't count, I mean, I'm not I'm not trying to give you a hard time, just to give you a hard time. Okay, we're supposed to be conducting these things in regard to the School Board Act, the Sunshine Act, our policies, and Robert's Rules of Order. This, these things don't fit with any of them. Okay. I'm reading here from the School Board Act. In ca- and I'm gonna abstract. I'm not gonna read all the verbiage. "In case any vacancy shall occur in a school district of the second, third, or fourth classes," we're a second class. "The remaining members of the Board of School Directors shall by a majority vote thereof fill such a vacancy from, from uh within thirty days thereafter." So we have to have a vote by the School Board Act.
Correct.
Our policy number, I think it's, I forgot to write it down. I think it's zero, zero, four.
Zero, zero, four is membership, yes.
All right. "A vacancy by reason of resignation shall be filled in accordance," and again, I'm abstracting, I'm not reading the whole thing. I'm reading what's applicable. "shall be filled in accordance with the school code and Sunshine Act and by the appointment by a majority vote of the remaining members of the board within thirty days."
Okay.
Robert's Rules of Order has no provision. There's many ways you can vote, but this isn't in any of them. So I'm just saying we should, you know, it's kind of be nice if we do it the way we're supposed to.
Yeah, this, we've talked about that. Yep, thank you.
Okay, so I hear what you're saying. Okay. Now, out of all of us, we've heard what was said. Okay. I'm sure we all have one person we're leaning towards. Okay. Okay, you're gonna, what, you're gonna vote for both of them?
Can I?
She might want time to deliberate.
I, 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 go ahead, please. You're talking.
What, what I'm looking at is, um, I'd like to kind of get an idea or a feel for what's going on. Okay. Prior to that meeting. Just for the simple fact that if we're going to vote for one person and not the other, is it really necessary to bring that person here? You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, and just because of the public nature of the meeting, I think that it would be problematic to come to any kind of decision about which way you want to go before the actual vote is cast.
Yeah.
Next week in a special meeting. I hear what you're saying. Uh, at the end of the day, um, I don't know that we can really control for that ahead of time.
Okay, well then, we'll just wait until that meeting and we'll actually vote at that time.
Can I propose another solution? It's a little bit of a problem for, for us, but we could have changed the special meeting to sometime before the um work meeting on the sixth and have a, but I thi- I don't think it's appropriate to do it tonight. I think you may want to uh, may want to deliberate, like you say, the public nature. But how would you feel about that, saying whatever, the fifth, the fourth? We could do it all on Zoom if you want to, but um, you know, to do the voting.
Because it has to be a public meeting. If it's not going to be before the, the meeting next week, then we have to have at least three days to do public notice. Just want to put that out there just to make sure.
Hey Roger?
Go ahead, Chris.
I think a couple of days for us to go over our answers and deliberate everything to, to be one hundred percent on board with everybody. Uh, we need a, a couple of days to go over what was said and uh double-check our answers and make sure we're given a fair shake. I don't think for us to make a decision tonight is uh the right way to go. I think that we had already said, and, and there was an email that said, give us time to deliberate our thoughts and stuff. And on the sixth, we were gonna do the special meeting. I think we ought to just stick with that.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, if that's, if that's what you guys want to do, then that's what we'll do. All right.
And I don't, I don't want to make an instant decision.
Okay.
Well, I understand that, so, all right.
We really wouldn't have, they really wouldn't have to be, whoever it is would really not have to be sworn in for the sixth because the voting's not until the thirteenth. So you wouldn't have to bring them both here that night anyway. They could watch the um
Yeah, I would.
They could watch the tape to catch up on the meeting and, you know, or they can come if they want and sit in the public and.
Or zoom in or.
Or zoom in, yeah.
Um, as you pointed out, when you're, when you're reading the, the statute, the board has to make the appointment within thirty days of the tenth of October. So you have until the tenth of November, which is before the voting session.
Yes.
So you have to make the appointment. The time that we are, are all meeting together is on the sixth. The swearing-in can happen at the voting meeting or you can push it off later, but the, the appointment has to happen. But before the tenth.
Yeah, that, that was my.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
That was my comment, is there's nothing worse than going for an interview and you just get drug, and then drug along and have to wait. And then it's like you said, if you had to both show up and all of a sudden, you know, you're the winner and you're not the winner, I don't want to do that to anyone in our community. So they can find out by watching, or they, if they want to sit here and watch us vote, that way they don't feel the pressure. So I really appreciate that. Um, I, I will say this, um lesson learned. The fact that Tom got to ask one candidate a different question, we have to technically, unless I'm proven wrong, which if I am wrong, I'll be, I'll hold it, I'll be happy. But asking one candidate a separate question and not asking the other candidate, we, you cannot take any information from that answer to help with your decision.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, and I also as we move forward in policy committee, I think the committee might want to consider putting down these steps in the policy, very simple. So the next time everyone will just know what to expect.
Okay, so.
They wouldn't say it's a policy, it might say it's a board operating.
Sure, yes, yeah, right.
Okay, one of the things that I'm looking at though is I kind of looked at that as though this was a follow-up question to what, what uh, what, because she was talking about the strengths and her first thing came to sports.
Right.
Yep. And then he wanted to follow up with that and make sure that, you know, okay, yeah, sports, but what about C T C stuff? So that's why I saw that as a follow-up question, not as a totally separate question.
Yeah.
Same way I asked, okay, with Manuel being um part of the DOC with hit, with uh Quehanna closing down, what is his plans? Is he gonna be moving out of the area? So, you know, that's that's all that was, is a follow-up question.
No, I, I understand, it's okay. He never said sports or trades. He just, he, he just never, it didn't come up.
Okay, no, it's fine. This is all, it's a learning. It's good. It's all good, Tom. It's all good. I'm just saying, that's why we were talking. You know, po- policy. So we all understand.
All right, so with that being said, we're gonna adjourn the meeting. Okay, and then come back on the sixth. And that's whenever we'll um vote on what's going on.
Similar, if I could, just similar to the way we've done special meetings that are fairly short in time. We'll just do that. That's the way we open the six-thirty meeting. It's a special meeting for the appointment of a board member from Region Three. Take care of that and then move into the regular meeting. Is that, does that work for you?
Yeah, that works for me.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
And we also have executive, I'm sorry, just to make sure, you know, we have executive session scheduled for five-thirty on the sixth also.
Okay.
So we have both of those things coming.
All right. All right, meeting adjourned.
Very good.